subsidies that were not working. So I had to make the decisions to pull out our economy from where it was. And the choices were few. Either I made the difficult choices or I'll continue to borrow more money. And default was imminent. In fact, I remember same thing, 10% every employee. In Kenya, 200 shillings employment. We agreed that we will get them out. We brought in the Hustler Fund to backstop everybody. Today, we have liberated everybody from the CRB. Now we have a better ecosystem. So what has happened to the economy? Over the last two and a half years, four things have happened to the economy because of the decisions we've made. Number one, inflation has come down from 9.6. Check it today, it is 3.8. Number two, our exchange rate, which was close to 165 for the last 14 months. Our exchange rate is at 129, down from 165. What is the position of our dollar reserves? It's gone up from $6 billion. As of last month, it was $11.8 billion, our dollar reserves. It's gone up from two and a half months, two and a half months of import cover. We are now at five months of import cover. If you follow World Economics, IMF last month announced that Kenya has moved from being the eighth largest economy in Africa in 2022 to being the sixth largest economy in Africa this year. So the decisions we made, difficult as they were, has given us dividends. Our exchange rate has stabilized. Inflation has come down and our numbers are looking good. It is a commitment I made to the people of Kenya. It is a commitment I am willing to do an exam on as to whether I passed or I did not. Number two, you know very well that when we were running for office, we had a huge problem of cost of living. Unga was retailing at 240. We had many other issues. And I made a decision that we are not going to continue subsidizing consumption. And I said it in black and white, that instead of subsidizing consumption, which never solves any problem, we were instead going to invest in production. It is the reason why we put more money, not in subsidizing Unga, not in subsidizing fuel. We put more money in subsidizing fertilizer, seeds and the agricultural sector. We managed to bring down the cost of fertilizer from about 6,500. I remember when I discussed with K T D A, down to 3,500 and finally down to 2,500. We managed to subsidize seeds. We managed to work with the farmers. We registered all the farmers for the first time. Government of Kenya was working on data. We had never registered our farmers ever since. But today, I can confidently tell you, we have six and a half million farmers. We know those who do coffee. We know everybody's farm the size. We know those who do tea. We know every farmer's detail and we can direct subsidies to the people who need it most. As a result, and by the way, the process of registration of farmers was very interesting. We had been given a bill of 6 billion shillings by somebody who wanted the process of registering farmers. We didn't have 6 billion shillings and I was not willing to look for it. So what did we do? We mobilized our chiefs, assistant chiefs and Likuru, Mzewa, Metta, all those people. Because they live in the villages. Today, we have a solid database. We collected that data in one month for free. And I can tell you that the challenges we used to have in distributing fertilizer, distributing seeds are now behind us. The crooks who used to collect, somebody has three acres. They go get fertilizer for 100 acres. They sell the balance and they cause unnecessary shortages. That is now behind us. If you are a farmer today, including William Ruto, I have a voucher. I can only buy as many bags as my piece of land is registered. And we have gotten rid of corruption. We have eliminated theft of fertilizer. Today, we can, with sufficient accuracy, know how much fertilizer we need for our coffee, for our tea, for our sugarcane, for our maize and all the other crops. What has happened? I committed myself that I was going to modernize agriculture. Because I understood a bit of it because I have been Minister of Agriculture before. Today, I can stand here before you. And if you have parents at home, they will tell you. Our coffee is doing better. Our tea is doing better. Our maize, we've gotten more, more, more production. And we are streamlining the sugar sector, including now going to cotton, going to rice. As a result, because of the process we have gone into, modernizing agriculture, building information into it, bringing technology into the agricultural space, making the right subsidies in production, not in consumption. Last year, let me give you the statistics for last year. Our maize production has gone up by 50%. From 44 million bags last year, we harvested 64 million bags. This year, we are, this year, we are targeting 75 million bags. The people who used to carry suprias in the streets, led by Mbadie here. Yeah? Have left the streets because the price of Unga has come from 240 is now 160, 140, 120. Tea. In 2022, we sold our tea exports and sales were 138 billion. Last year, our tea was 215 billion. Those of you sitting here who grow coffee, a kilo of coffee was 65 shillings in 2022. A kilo of coffee today is between 110 and 150. Why? We have subsidized fertilizer. We have chased away the cartels. The people who are registered as farmers, brokers, millers and also buyers at the Nairobi Coffee Exchange. We have gotten rid of them and we have streamlined that sector. Farmers are making more money. It is a commitment I made that I would do. And I can proudly tell you that today, we are making more money from our agriculture. I can confidently tell you today, we have streamlined the sugar sector, which had big problems. Unfortunately for the people in that sector who are taken hostage, the sugar sector. I had been Minister for Agriculture, so I knew where the problem was. So we've sorted it out. And in a space where sugarcane farmers, they were taking their produce. They wait for six months, maybe sometimes one year. And I'm sure if you have sugarcane farmers here or at home, they will tell you. Finally, there was no money. I had to look for money from government to go and pay farmers, to go and pay workers in sugar factories. And I told them that that was not going to go on. It's not going to be business as usual. If you heard that I made a phrase called mambo ni matatu, it was because of sugar. And I went and told those crooked people there, you have to get out of this space because it was not going to be business as usual. So what has happened in that space? Because of the interventions we have made, production in the sugar sector has moved from 495, almost 500,000 metric tons in 2022. This year, we were at 815,000 metric tons. From 50 billion shillings every year to now 90 billion. And today, I can confidently tell you, mumias, which could not pay workers, which could not pay farmers, which could not pay taxes. Today, mumias pays farmers every seven days. Pays their workers every month. This year in January, we went to pay dividends to sugarcane farmers for the first time in the history of Kenya. I am not talking about what's going to happen. I'm talking about what happened. And end of this year, by God's grace, because now we have brought the private sector using the mumias experience into Nzoia, Chemelil, Mohoroni and Sony. We will be doing the same end of this year. We will be paying dividends in our farming factories. So, and my promise to you is that in the next four years, three to four years, Kenya will be a net exporter of sugar. We have already licensed another four new factories. Farmers have grown sugar on an extra 200,000 acres of land in Kenya because they can now see a future to that enterprise. And so we're transforming the agricultural sector. And to be able to achieve that, I tell you, we've had a fight, a big fight, you know? The cartels in the sugar sector did not want it to happen. They organized demonstrations. They intimidated leaders and they did all manner of things. But I stood my ground and I said, this is a job I have to do. And whatever it takes, I must do it. So what has happened in that space? We have now a much more predictable space. Sorry, gentlemen. I think you can leave it. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay? So what I can tell you is that because of the interventions we have done in the agricultural sector, and we are still miles away. We have now started interventions in the, in the rice sector because we are still importing 70% of our rice. We shouldn't be. We're working on cotton. We're working on other value chains. And, and so that will eventually help us in two ways. Number one, we will substantially reduce the cost of living. Because a huge portion of the expenditure of citizens is expenditure on food. It goes all the way to 55%. If you reduce that, then you substantially reduce the cost of living. So my assurance to you and to fellow citizens in Kenya is that because we are, because of the interventions we've done in the agricultural sector, we have reduced imports of maize, for example, by 80%. And we have reduced imports of sugar by 70%. Let me tell you this. We have been spending 500 billion Kenya shillings every year to import food, to import edible oil, to import sugar, maize, wheat, rice. 500 billion shillings every year. It is my intention, at least this year, I have reduced from 500 billion to 280 billion. I've cut off 220 billion. My intention is to cut it down to zero. And we can do it in three to five years. And it is the reason why, it is not by miracle. It is the reason why we have more money in our foreign exchange. The reason why our foreign exchange has grown from 600, 6 billion dollars to 11.8 is because we are using less of our money to import food which we can grow locally. Are we together? Yes. It doesn't require any magic, doesn't require any rocket science. Just requires making the right decisions. Let me take you to the third issue that was of importance to me because it is a commitment to the people of Kenya that I made. And it is the subject of education. We all know here that education is the equalizer that makes all of us equal. All children equal. We had a problem with the CBC. I remember when we were in the campaign trail, many people said we should abolish CBC. Because parents didn't know what was going to happen. They didn't know where their junior school was going to be. It was not clear. So when I got into office, the first thing I did was to set up a task force led by Professor Monavu. And I put there very seasoned educationists and, and other professionals. They came up with a roadmap, which we quickly implemented to sort out CBC. We had huge problems with our university funding model. 23 universities were technically bankrupt. Many of them were paying half salary to their lecturers. You know that, cases of Egaton and many of the others. And we had very serious and acute shortage of teachers. So what has happened? Over the last two and a half years, number one, we have hired 76,000 teachers. We are hiring another 24,000 teachers before January. So we will have 100,000 new teachers teaching our children. Number two, we have changed the funding model from being resources to the university. We now have a student-centered financing model that makes sure that we treat every student fairly. So that students from poor families can get up to 90% government scholarship. Because it is necessary for us to make sure that every child has an equal chance to education and an equal chance at life. We have also expanded infrastructure because there was clarity that many of our schools did not have adequate classrooms. Many of them had never seen a laboratory. So we have put up 23,000 new classrooms. 1,600 new laboratories are being built from 1st of this month so that we can create sufficient infrastructure to give an equal chance to all our children to do their education. So in that space, again, you heard there was kelele. Because we said, you know, how do we, my child, I pay 200,000 every term in an academy, you know? But when I'm told, pay 50,000 a year, not a term, 50,000 a year for university, I have a problem with it. You know, because we have to live within our means. We couldn't afford to pay for all our children in university. So we had to reorganize that funding model and that's why we made it student-centered. So a bit of kelele here and there, but we have since stabilized it. I remember going to cooperative university in Karen. And I had a conversation with the Vice Chancellor, I think it's called Professor Kamau. So I asked him, Professor, I want a honest feedback. What is your feedback on the new funding model that we have, that is student-centered and the other model? He told me, Mr. President, I will tell you three things. Number one, I can pay all my lecturers on time. I can pay all my suppliers on time. And I can pay your taxes on time. But then he said that there is something you need to correct. There are some students that sometimes are put in the wrong band. So you need to make sure that the means testing instrument that places students in different categories is accurate. I told him, thank you very much, that is good feedback. So we are reworking the means testing instrument to make sure that it is much more accurate. So we have collected more data to make sure that when we place a student in a certain band, it is the correct band so that we don't disadvantage any student by putting them in the wrong band. I know it is, I know time is running, so I want to conclude by saying two final things. We also agreed, and you heard me speak about it, about health. And I did say, health is not a privilege for those who can afford. Health is a right for every Kenyan. And as a result, we needed to change the health delivery mechanism because it wasn't sensitive. We had NHIF that did not quite reach out to people who did not either have a job. It was based on people who have a job and those who can afford. But everybody gets sick. It's not those who can afford and those who have a job. Everybody gets sick. And the Constitution, Section 43, says every Kenyan mandates government, in fact, commands government to make sure that every Kenyan has access to health. You also know that universal health coverage has been a discussion we have had as a, as a, as a nation for many years. It was in the Nasser manifesto. It was in the Nak manifesto. It was in the Jubilee manifesto. In fact, one of our big four in Jubilee was universal health coverage. In this election, it was in the Kenya Quanza manifesto. It was in the Azimio manifesto. And somebody had to do something about it. And we've had too many false starts. Professor Anyan Young started, tried it, it didn't work. You remember Ngilu tried it, it didn't work. You remember we tried it as Jubilee, it failed. This time around, I said, it cannot fail. Because I have had sufficient experience to be able to deal with this thing. So we put together our universal health coverage plan. I can now tell you with a lot of confidence, right? That we have a health insurance scheme that leaves no Kenyan behind. I can tell you that. And I want you to try it, right? I want you to try it. Because in the old NHIF, in fact, it was destined to collapse because we had accumulated debts of 30 billion shillings. And it was growing by a billion and a half every year. It wasn't reducing. So it was destined to crash at some point. So what did I do? We changed the law. We had to start from zero because we had tried to operate with the law the way it was. It failed once, it failed twice, it failed three times. It was clear to me that we had something that was fundamentally wrong. So we worked on a new bunch of laws. We replaced the NHIF Act with five pieces of legislation. Thankfully, Parliament passed the laws. We changed the contribution structure because, let me tell you, you know very well that the least you could pay under NHIF was 500 shillings. The small people, Mama Mbuga, Bada Bada, they paid 500 shillings. William Ruto, the President of Kenya, paid 1,700. How much? 1,700. So a person earning 1 million is paying 1,700. What percentage of his earning is that? Are we together? Mama Mbuga, whose income is 5,000 shillings a month, is paying 500. What percentage is that? 10%. So the poor people are paying 10%. The rich guys are paying 0.001%. Is there an element of fairness there? Even if you calculate it using what language? So we said, let's change the contribution structure. Let us make it uniform. Let us make it equitable. Today, the law demands that each and every one of us, from Mama Mbuga to the president, pays 2.75% of their income to, to, to Shah for health insurance. The small people have come down from 10% to 2.75%. The big guys like myself and you guys seated here have come from down. We are now all of us at 2.75%. That's how I became Sakaya. Yeah? Because we wanted a fair, how, how will you argue? How will you argue with that, you know? So, um, so what has happened? I'm paying more. I think I pay now 50,000 a month from 1,700. Mama Mbuga has come down from 500 to 300. Are we together? We're raising more money. We are actually raising three times more money than we were raising in, in, in NHIF. Are we together? And today, it is possible for Mama Mbuga, who never imagined that they would go for surgery and they would not have to sell their land or their livestock to pay. That Shah today pays for citizens equally. And you will hear many stories of what Shah is doing. As I talk to you on a daily basis, people in the informal sector who never participated in NHIF, they are registering, 50,000 people are registering every day on Shah. We had 7 million people. Do you know how many people we have today on the platform? 24 million. How many? 24 million. That is how transformative it is. So, and by the way, people are, are registered. So, and by the way, people are, are registering voluntarily. Today, if you ask somebody to go, to come and do a fundraising for you because you have a health bill, they will, the first question they ask you, are you registered in SIA? Because they know if you are registered in SIA, at least a portion of your, of your bill would have been settled. And if you are not, they will tell you, instead of us doing the arambi, let me register you in SIA. So I can tell you, it's not perfect, it's not a hundred percent there. But I can tell you, we are on course. And I am determined and I'm clear that it's going to work. Because we have applied our mind to it. It took us almost a year to put together the legislation that now underpins our health insurance delivery. And my commitment is that to give every Kenyan a chance. If you want to try, star one four seven hash. I think that's a correct, somebody correct me if it is wrong. Correct? Star one four seven hash. You will land on the SIA platform. You can register yourself there. They will take you to a place where they will assess you. And my commitment was, let everybody pay prorata on their income. The indigents, the people who cannot afford to pay, there will be about a million, a million and a half, maybe two million, maybe three, will be paid for by the government of Kenya. That is how we are going to make it universal. Are we together? That was my commitment on health and I am very proud that we are all now moving in the right direction. The numbers speak for themselves. I get a report every evening because it is something that is so dear to me and I see the numbers every day and we keep correcting. We have closed down a thousand fake hospitals, one thousand. And we are closing a few in the next coming days. Because there are still those who want to change. For example, somebody has gone there for an outpatient, they want to change it to be an inpatient so that they can claim more money. Those ones, we are going to shut them now. And we're going to make sure that the program is clean. What have we done? We deployed technology. Today, there are no exercise books. Whenever you went, whenever you went to hospital, you would carry a small slip, then the doctor writes something there and then you go to the next place and then we stopped that. Now we have moved to a digital platform. Admissions are digital, discharge is digital, claims are digital and we can track. That is why it is easy for us to discover who is doing what game. Just for, for you to understand the numbers, in the last eight months, we have paid for treatment of four point nine million Kenyans under SIA. And we have paid fifty-three billion Kenyan shillings. By the end of the year, we will have paid something in the order of between seven, seventy-five or eighty billion Kenyan shillings for treatment. NHIF used to pay between twenty and twenty-five billion shillings every year. SIA is going to be paying three times because we have brought more people into the equation. It is no longer a preserve for those who can afford, it is now a right for every Kenyan. And that is my view. Are we together? Finally, we all understand that we have a challenge of unemployment and we have to do something about it. And jobs must be deliberate. You must have deliberate government policy on how to create jobs. Jobs will not happen, they have to be created deliberately. And that is why my good friend here, Hinga, was showing you the numbers. So our program of housing, again, you people know here. Housing was a standard manifesto item in all political parties. Every party said, oh, we are going to do housing. This one said, we are going to do housing. Even us in Jubilee, among the big four, one of them was housing. In fact, just so that you know, housing was our plan in twenty seventeen. So we went to the campaign, talked about housing, said how we are going to do this thing. And we actually went out of our way. So when we won the election, my good friend Uhuru Kenyatta, my boss, then told me, look, this housing, I have a very good person who I know. I met him in South Africa. Okay, I, we must look for him. I told him, Mr. President, please, let's look for him. We looked for the fellow, we found him. He's called Charles Hinga, this man here. This man was brought by President Uhuru. He told me, this man knows this thing, okay? So we passed the law, twenty eighteen. We have put a levy, the levy was one, one point five percent levy, okay? So we signed, Uhuru signs the law into, the bill into law and the kelele starts, you know? Kelele, kelele everywhere, you know? So my good friend Uhuru called me and said, William, I thought you have, you have a house. I told him, I have a house. So this noise people are making around here, you know, if these people don't want these houses, let's forget about it. You know, we're not going to be building houses for ourselves. That's how the housing thing died. So the next celebration event had announced, this housing thing is now voluntary. So nothing happened. So by God's grace, you know, Hinga did not leave. So I, I'm around Bahati Msuri, Nkakora East, us. Naiko ile tumeweka kwa manifesto, I spoke about it everywhere, this housing thing, in every political meeting. So when we now reinstated the, the law, the members of parliament came to see me and said, oh, you know, this thing is so unpopular, we cannot do this thing. No, 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 we cannot. So I asked them, friends, were we together in the campaign trail? Yes. Did we promise housing? Yes. How, how did you expect it to be done? Do you have a different plan of delivering this thing? No. So let's do the levy. We did the levy and for your information, the levy in, in our manifesto in Kenya Quanza did not even have a percentage. The levy that had a percentage was in the Asimio manifesto. The one Kinambadi and these other people and, and Olekina there. Yeah? Was one point five percent? Sasa, these are the people now who call me Sakaya. Oh, unajua sasa u isakayo, amelete tax. Sijunini? Sijunini. But, good people. It is not possible for us to borrow money to do housing. This is the instrument and this is what other countries have done. Today, housing is transforming the landscape of Kenya. Believe you me, if you see what is happening to our towns, go to Madera, go to Wajia, go to Mombasa, Kitui, Machacos, Nairobi, anywhere, Nakuru, Eldoret, Nanyuki, Kakamega, Poma Bay, Migori, everywhere. The largest housing estate today in every town in Kenya is our housing program. The landscape, the skyline of many towns is changing. And for your information, this is just one and a half years. Tell me what's going to happen in five years, in ten years, in twenty years. Kenya is going to change fundamentally when we are here. For those of you living here, you will come home and you will be looking for the compass to find your way around. Are we together? And not just that, you've heard from Hinga. Apart from that, we have big dividends. We have three hundred thousand people now, actual people working. We have architects, quantity surveyors, engineers, plumbers, artisans, electricians, carpenters, masons, name them, working. People who have gone to school, people who have certificates, people who have come from college, they are finally finding a place to do some formal work. Not just that, we have now whole construction industries developing to do doors, to do windows, to do hinges. And we are moving on now to tiles. Shortly, we will be doing lifts. We already agreed that we work on companies that will now come and set up shop in Kenya to do lifts and on and on. So a whole construction industry is developing in Kenya. We have a pipeline of seven hundred thousand houses. You've seen the numbers here. And we are going to not only create jobs, not only create industries, but we are also going to have, to get rid of the seven million Kenyans who today live in slums. And we are going to have, you know, better living conditions, places of dignity. You know, you know, sometimes, you know, you, you find some arguments, oh, who told this man that we needed houses? You know? I get, I get those kind of things many times. But you see, ask yourself, somebody who shares a toilet with five other families, one that you have to pay to use, people who have, there is no road, electricity much more expensive, water is much more expensive, living in Kenya. For those of us who live in houses that have two, three, four, five toilets, you take them for granted. There are people who don't have a toilet. In fact, many of the people that we have given social houses in Mukuru, the best thing they celebrate is not the house, it is the fact that they have a toilet of their own. I mean, look at that. Look at that, you know? That's how serious it is. And that is how, so much of indignity that sometimes people live in, which we take for granted. And that is why we ask silly questions, who told you we needed houses? At least for once, you know? You, you, you should appreciate that there are people who need them more than you think. So um, so I, I was talking to you about jobs, there we are creating jobs. I also made a commitment that we are going to expand the digital superhighway, as we called it, because we needed to bring more people into the space of digital jobs. As you are aware, Kenya has the best human capital anywhere in the world. We speak the best English. I say we only speak, we are only second to the British. Yes. We speak the best English, anywhere. Ask any corporate, anywhere in the world, they will tell you, Kenyans speak the best English. And we have the best education. And we are the least supervised when we are given a job. So we have the best human capital and therefore, and we live in a global world. It is said and statistics are there that forty percent of the world's workforce will come from Africa by twenty fifty. We need to take the front, we need to step forward early. Are we together? And that is why Rosalyn is here. The reason I asked this girl, my PS. And you guys asked me that you needed a diaspora ministry. We didn't get a diaspora ministry, I couldn't stretch it that far. But I got a state department dedicated to matters diaspora. And today, we have streamlined with the assistance of the State Department of Diaspora, working with the Ministry of Labor, we have streamlined apart from the jobs we are creating in the, in our housing and other public sector infrastructure, we have now identified labor mobility, that Kenyans being a strong workforce, we can work anywhere in the world. And we can work anywhere in this globe. And that is why we have straightened, we've made it much more clear, we have eliminated characters who are taking advantage of Kenyans, there was, there was a lot of fraud. We had one thousand, I think, six hundred registered, those agencies, they are called what? Yes, private recruitment agencies, we had one thousand six hundred of them, many of them were crooks. We registered almost nine hundred of them because they had one problem or another. We demanded, we demanded that any job, any job placement must be put on the portal, we now have a portal, so that we can make sure that we can track any Kenyan who is going to work outside Kenya. We must know where they are going, which company is employing them, how much are they being paid, what kind of job are they doing and how do we get them to come home when it is necessary? And that's the job Rosalyn has. Because we have streamlined that whole space, we now have a good record of Kenyans working abroad. In the last two years, ever since we streamlined that space, how many Kenyans have we placed, Rosalyn? Four hundred thousand Kenyans. You know, when I, when I say this, people cannot fathom, they, they, they can't believe it. But that's the reality. And the statistics are there. And for your information, our remittances from diaspora remittance has gone up from four billion dollars, yeah? In twenty twenty-two, we are now at four point nine five billion dollars. We are actually, we have almost a billion dollars more. That is one hundred and twenty billion shillings more. Because of the more Kenyans that are now working outside Kenya. It is my intention to take that to not five billion dollars, as you may be waiting, to ten billion dollars and it is doable. It is also the reason why today we have more reserves, because we have more people working in that space. That's number two. Number three, finally, I could tell you number four, number five and number six, but let me leave it at number three. We are expanding the space in our digital jobs ecosystem. We now have a hundred and eighty-five thousand people working on our digital jobs platform. From CCI, if you go to Ruero, you will find five thousand people working in one building at CCI. And you find many others who are, including in our Tivets, there are many Kenyans now who are earning in dollars, working on the digital platform because we have streamlined that space and is the reason why we are spreading fiber optic around Kenya. So you should just know that apart from sometimes the many insults in the social media, there are people who are using the internet to earn real money. Forget about the insults, forget about the Forget about the insults, forget about the pornography and all the other things there. There are people who are using internet to earn money and to sustain their livelihoods and to sustain their families. And that is the space we are working. So we are deliberate about where we are creating jobs. I can tell you with confidence, we have three hundred thousand jobs in the housing sector. You can go and see it for yourself. We have four hundred thousand Kenyans who have gone out in the last two years. We can give you the statistics and their names. We can tell you with confidence that we have Kenyans working in the digital space. We know where they are, we know what they are doing. And we will continue to push that space. I do not wish to say more than that. I just wanted to let you know because I know sometimes you're here and you get to read our newspapers. It is bad news from page one to the last page, headline after headline. You will think home is burning. I want to tell you that, um, I want to tell you that, um, somebody is telling me some information here. You will come and tell them, I don't know. They will, you will come and tell them.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Dr. Isaiah Oino, the chairman of Stock UK Diaspora Sako, one of the leading diaspora Sako that we have. I think you have stipulated or you've given an account of what the government is currently doing mostly in agriculture. But my question is in terms of corporations. What sort of incentives are you giving for especially companies that are indigenous in Kenya? And also in terms of the investors like us who come into Kenya? What sort of incentives, tax incentives are you giving us? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good question. In the finance bill again that I signed a couple of days ago, we have expanded that space. Just in this trip, when I came here, we have signed five companies that are moving their headquarters to Kenya. Lloyds of London, this afternoon, signed to move, to open an office in Nairobi International Financial Centre. The Africa office for that matter. When I was in Spain two days ago, European Bank for Reconstruction and Development is opening their headquarters in Nairobi. Their again Africa headquarters in Nairobi. Bupa Health International, today also signed, is it, was it today? Yesterday, yesterday, also signed to open their regional headquarters in Nairobi. Africa Finance Corporation, a huge continental corporation, is also opening their office in Nairobi. Africa's Specialist Risk, Specialty Risk also is opening their headquarters in Nairobi. Three months ago, Teleperformance, the largest BPO company in the world, opened its headquarters at Two Rivers in Nairobi. And I can count for you more companies and more companies and more companies to tell you in simple language, Nairobi is becoming the financial hub of our continent. But if you read standard newspaper, they will tell you companies are closing in Nairobi. And they will not tell you which ones. So I just want to tell you that there, there, there are, there are real companies, serious companies who assess Kenya for who we are. Let me give you one interesting piece of information. When I spoke to the president of the European Investment, uh, European Bank of Reconstruction and Development, I asked her, no, she actually volunteered. She said, by the way, there were six countries that were candidates for them to open the Africa Regional Office. There were six of them, Nigeria, I don't know, she said, which, which country, there were six. But she said, these countries were assessed and Kenya came on top. So I was curious. So I asked her, what were the reasons behind this? She said three things. Number one, she said, you have the best human capital. You will get any type of expertise. If you want a financial advisor, if you want a financial person, if you want somebody in tech, if you want somebody in this area, you will find them easily in Nairobi. And number two, she said, you are a stable democracy. Yeah? You, you know what that, you know what that means? You know? So that was why they, they, they want a place that is predictable. They don't want a place that tomorrow, things can go, can go haywire. And the third thing she said was, you are, your banking system, your, 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 your ecosystem of financial services is good. And they are a bank and they want to operate from a place where transactions do not have too many corners. So there are real incentives on investing in Kenya. And I think I have a good gentleman from Treasury who can take you through so that you can also help us persuade other people with empirical evidence that Kenya is a good destination to invest. Can we have two more? You have a gentleman there who is getting impatient, this gentleman. And then we have a lady here, and then we will have my sister here.
Thank you, Your Excellency. My name is John Karanja, and I'm a community leader from Leicester. One thing I would like to thank you personally is for the State Department of Diaspora that you started. We have seen changes and I'm sure they have shown you case studies for it. But I would like to request you to extend it, and especially in this country, because there is one community that we have forgotten, and that's the Kenyan Asian community. Nahwajani Tuma, it's just by my observation. They are very rich in business acumen, medicine, all the fields that you may think of. And that, those are the passports that they hold, and they're still Kenyans. They would do better in terms of our support and the diaspora community as well. Secondly, I've got, I've got one question, and it's not directly to you, but to our politicians and in general, from both sides of the equation. Why do you put Kenya in perpetual campaign mode? This is why we don't get to hear the good news that we've heard today. The good things are being done today because we are forever in campaign mode. Thank you.
Well, the question on politicians, I don't know who is going to answer. But it is something for us to think about, you're right. Election is a one-day event. Kenya is work in progress every day, you know? So I, I think you, you're speaking to many of us in very profound ways that we have a country to mind. But elections are once in five years. We cannot do the job of a day in five years for all the five years. I think we should do other things when our time demands. And on the Asian, on our Asian friends, I think Rosalyn, you have some notes there, and you will pick it up. And then we see, we do not want to discriminate on any of members of our society because everybody has an input and a contribution to make. My sister, and then finally I will give it to, oh yeah, you already have the mic.
What a bad leg. Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to say everything you say, I don't want to pick one. I'm so happy, like every one of us, of the progress you have made in Kenya. You've made progress and you've taken very hard decisions, like your colleague said there, that the decisions possibly you've made are the hard ones, not the easy ones. So my name is Regina Williams. I come from Kenya, a village in Kisi. I came from extreme poverty in Kisi. And I came to this country, but this country has given me opportunity to be something. I'm the first East African female politician in London. And my leg is sick, but when I say, when I saw that you are here, I said, I'll come and shake hand. Because I've shaken hand with people like Tony Blair, Gordon Brown, that I worked with. And I say, my president from Kenya must come. But I have something as well to ask you. Maybe your colleague there, the one who's taking notes, I've been here for that five years. And I went to Dubai last May. My heart was touched. You said that you have statistics of everybody outside. But we do have, uh, people in Dubai, Kenyans, that I met, and my heart really went down because I didn't like the way they were there, you know? Not all of them, but a few that I met. Met one particular girl from, I think, Bomet. And she told me that she is working in Dubai, and what she does is cleaning cats and dogs. And I thought she was a veterinary doctor, but actually she's been employed by a Malaysian person to do this kind of job. Having said that, I was in Malaysia as well for the Women Economic Forum. It's a beautiful country and great. But those people have gone places without the, the country knowing where they are. Some of them are actually having a hard time. I don't know what we can do, especially in the Middle East, to get the statistics and help. And they are afraid of coming back home. That's what they told me. Because I told them my profile. And, Mr. President, by the way, um, this book, this is your present today, you'll go with it to Nairobi. Because I, um, Amazon Bestseller Award-winning book for this book, which says Blessed Struggles: My Journey From Extreme Poverty in Kenya to Professional and Political Success in Great Britain. It was number three in the category of British autobiographies. So this is yours. Please, I hope it will land in your eyes.
Thank you.
I want to shake your hand today.
Thank you, my dear. We'll do that shortly.
So another thing is about this NHIF, you know, we are here. And the people at home, they are saying, we need money, we need money for medical, medical. What is happening to make sure that everybody in Kenya register to this new system, the health system? Thank you.
Thank you very much, my dear. On the desperate situation you have explained to us in the Middle East, it is those kind of situations that we want to avoid. It is the reason why we have insisted that any Kenyan who is going to work outside Kenya. You know, many of those people, by the way, they travel using tourist visas. You know, they are taken through routes that are not correct. So this time around, we have said, any Kenyan who is going to work outside Kenya, we will give them passports. We have reduced the time for passports now, three days. If you are, if you have a letter for employment, you get your passport in three days max. Some of them you can get them the same day. So we have created a green channel for people who are going to work outside Kenya. But we have also demanded that going forward, no Kenyan who is going to work outside is going to travel using a student visa or a tourist visa. And we need to have a record so that if they are in distress, if they are doing odd jobs that have an indignity, the way you have said, we can, we can, we can help them. I can bet you that the lady from Bomet did not go through the hands of Rosalyn. Otherwise, we would have stepped in and we would have told her, you cannot leave Kenya to go and look after dogs. That would not, we would not, we would not allow anything of that nature. And it is the reason why we have changed the system so that today we have digitized the space to make sure that we have the right people going and doing the right jobs. And we know how much money they earn, and we know how they are going to get home if it is necessary. On the issue of registration of Shah, it's an open portal. We are now working with the counties. We are working with the, we are, the, the, the reason why I have told you every day between twenty and fifty thousand Kenyans register is because there is a huge campaign to get everybody registered. Because by registering, we, we get three things. Number one, we get data. Because my sister here has told you about data. Data is very important. Imagine all this while, we didn't have data on health, you know? So today, we are saying it is mandatory for you to register in Shah. It is the basis upon which you will go to a level-one hospital, a dispensary, a health centre. So long as you are registered in Shah, you will be treated without pay. So long as you are registered. Because that way, we can keep track of our health data. How many people are being treated for malaria? How many people are being treated for the next disease? What is the disease, the disease load? Then we prepare ourselves in advance to make sure that the correct medicines are available and that whole health, health journey. And finally, I would be very happy to shake your hand because I think you have, you make us proud as, as Kenyans. Just give me a while, let me answer a few questions from my sister here. I think you made a case for our Asian community members. I think one of them is here.
Represented for that, the moment. Your Excellency, I'd like to say I'm really happy to be here and it feels surreal to be in present, in your presence. My, the last time I met you was in 2015, when you had visited us at USIU while you were the Vice President. And now, having to, to meet you right now as the President, again, it's an honour. So I had prepared myself for this, but I'll just go through, it's, it's really one, one question. But I came here to earn my masters in data analytics. And my whole process over here has been with is, with its like perks. But I would say that we Kenyans speak better English than any British that I've ever met and still do.
I agree with you.
Actually, more majority of Kenyans speak better English than the majority here. I'm not, I'm not attacking the British, but that's a fact. The, the thing is that, like many Kenyans, youth abroad, I faced many challenges and from unemployment to navigating life between two worlds. Yet I remain eager to contribute to the Kenyan progress and from the diaspora aspects of it. And my question is, how can young professionals like myself with global education and skills meaningfully contribute to your government's vision from abroad, particularly in data and innovation? And while all this thought-provoking conversations have been going on, there's one thing that was just coming across my head when remembering my Swahili teacher in Mombasa, who constantly told me to remember one metali, and this is the time, I think, I remembered it. And it goes as, hindin diko kwenyango, wendawo tupuakwa. So that's, I think, I, I think this is the opportunity with all the conversations that you've been stirring all this evening. And lastly, I would be honoured to have a picture with you. Thank you.
All right, all right. Some good Kisweli as well there. So, um, let me say that we have a big ecosystem of both national and international companies that are setting up in Kenya. From Amazon Web Services to Apple to Microsoft and all, every other company in between, we have local companies that are, that are growing, you know? have local companies that are, that are growing, you know, local expertise whom we are working with. Techno Brain, for example. We have many of the, many companies, local companies in Kenya that are doing a lot of professional work. So I cannot tell you that Government of Kenya can employ you, but I can tell you, we are creating the space for companies that will be looking for expertise like yours to be stationed in Kenya. That is why I just told you, Lloyds of London, we need, we need people like you with your expertise in statistics and data analysis. Companies like EBRD, for example, companies like the ones we have asked to come on board in Kenya, insurance companies like the Africa Finance Corporation and many others who are in that space. So you can meaningfully contribute to the progress of our nation by coming to be part of the professionals that are making Kenya work. You just heard that one of the companies, the, the reason why they decided to set up shop in Kenya is because they can find professionals like you. So when you are in Kenya, that is what makes us a, 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 a destination of choice by serious international companies. So allow me to stop here for now because Rosalind, you can, because I think we, we, I have short, overshot my runway and, and we can, we can do the meet and greet.[1740.01][1740.01][Applause] Can we? Okay. All right, just, Your Excellency, when I came here, I got carried away and I forgot one fundamental issue. If our ministers can stand up, it will be good. Mr. Dono Bumbandi is here, Minister for Treasury, National Treasury, he is Minister for Finance.[1791.32][1791.32][Applause] He does all the number crunching.